Organizations and the Boston Public Schools as presented.
So.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will we please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you once again to Mr. Sacks and Ms. Diaz for your work here. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, for your advocacy over the years. Thank you to Mayor Walsh as well. You know, I think this is one of the first things he and I talked about when he took office, and this has been something that he's been pushing and funding for a number of years through, and much of that is, again, owed to the advocacy of Ms. Robinson, who was on his education transition team when he became mayor and began pushing for this issue in 2013 and 2014. So this is a culmination of a lot of work. This helps continue to bridge the gap between supply and demand for UPK and the city and does so in a way that provides, meets that that demand with high-quality education. So thank you much again, and good luck.
Thank you.
I'm happy you folks will have the opportunity to get to work and tell our families all about this soon.
Thank you. Awesome. Thanks again.
All right. Good night. So we move on to our final action item this evening, which is the memorandum of agreement between the Boston Public Schools and the Boston Teachers Union, which is 66 of the American Federation of Teachers in Massachusetts, and the school committee of the City of Boston relative to the reopening of schools for the 2021 school year during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. That's a mouthful. As you all will recall, we received a presentation on the tentative agreement earlier this evening. And before we open it up to final questions or comments from the committee, I just want to redirect because we heard a number of comments during the the public comment session this evening. I want to direct a couple of questions to the superintendent. As I recall, we do have a memorandum of agreement that has been negotiated with the BTU, correct?
Yes.
And as far as I'm aware, the BTU voted in favor and adopted this MOU at a meeting of the membership last Wednesday, correct?
That is correct.
And there are provisions in that contract that provide for a consideration for teachers that need accommodations or leave related to COVID-19 concerns, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we also have a number of fail safes put in place for both citywide COVID rates as well as neighborhood-specific COVID rates to try to address and tamp down the spread of any sort of COVID infections across the the schools that are included in that MOU, excuse me, MOA.
That is correct, I believe. Jeremiah, I'm pretty sure we have both of those for neighborhoods and for citywide.
And for that last piece, I think there was a little bit of confusion there.
Double.
Perhaps even in the membership, if if I can read into some of the questions a little bit earlier. So maybe either Ms. Post or Mr. Hassan, Mr. Taylor, Dr. Chiselli, perhaps someone could just briefly walk us through once again the the fail safes that have been put in place around the citywide infection rate as well as the neighborhood infection rate and the steps that the district will take to address each one of those, because I think that's very important, in particular to the East Boston neighborhood, as we've heard this evening.
Yes, Tammy, Ms. Post can speak to those rates that are in there as well as the work with the Boston Health Commission and what we're attempting to do. You're on mute.
Tammy, you're on mute. Excuse me. This issue was discussed at length, and of course, everybody is very aware that different neighborhoods have different rates, and the Boston Public Health Commission is keeping track of all of that on a publicly available website. What the MOU states is that obviously the district will pivot to fully remote if the citywide positivity testing rate is 4% or over. With regard to neighborhood rates, though, if in fact, we have the Chief Martinez come in and talk to us, and if if a neighborhood is double that rate, so anything over 8%, we would do specific testing in that neighborhood in order to try to drive down those rates. However, while we were at the negotiating table, and certainly the East Boston rates were higher, we made sure that the Boston Public Health Commission was working hard to bring that rate down, and as you all talked about, it went from over 11 to just over 6 right now. And so the provision in the MOU says still that if there's any neighborhood over 8%, there will be specific testing in that neighborhood. But even while there is no neighborhood over 8%, we are doing 5% of random sampled testing of all BTU members, and we have in the MOU some prioritization of particular kinds of work roles that change depending on what the rates are.
Thank you, Ms. Post. And just, I hope my fellow members will bear with me in speaking a little bit out of turn and in directing some of these questions, but after this long night, and a number of the questions that were raised in the public comment and the extent to which I've been involved with the district in talking through the negotiations here in the last couple of months, I wanted to try to focus a few of the questions here before we move on to others. One other item I will ask is, we did track the the feedback that we received in surveys, and not even surveys, in the selection analysis from families all across the city, and we did that by school, by neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And Dr. Chiselli, while we're, during the meeting, I look back at the dashboard, and I understand that it's over nearly 60%, and I think the exact number is 58.9% of families in East Boston with an 81% response rate chose hybrid. Is that is that jive with what your recollection is? Hope you're on mute.
I'd have I'd have to pull the dashboard up this late in the in the night, but I will pull it up. But I do know that the numbers were above 50%, which was, you know, typically most neighborhoods are 50/50, but East Boston was a little bit more tiered on the hybrid. I just.
It was 53.9% with an 80% response rate.
Thank you. Sorry for inflating that.
That was before September 10th, so it could even, I don't know if it's higher or not.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I make that, I raise that point because, you know, again, I appreciate superintendents pointing out earlier, you know, we all empathize with the teachers that, you know, are faced with some very urgent decisions here, particularly those that are suffering from conditions that might prevent their return to school in a COVID environment or living with others that might be at risk. But we do, we are a service. We are a public utility, and we serve our students, and we serve them in person, and we are trying our best to try to get students as as close to normal again in their education and their learning experiences we can get. And the the interest is clear in East Boston that actually it exceeds the district average in terms of families wanting to return to the school building. So I just wanted to point that out and make sure that that was part of the record here, as we consider the scope of the MOU, excuse me, MOA, I'm sorry, I keep calling it MOU. That's before us for a vote. So again, I beg your indulgence for directing some of those questions at the outset here, but I'd like to open it up now to members for questions and discussion. If you'd like to make yourself known or raise your hand virtually, we'll get to each one of you. And I think we'll start, I see Mr. James has his hand raised, so we'll start with him.
Hi. Is there like a certain, is there a certain like number that that neighborhoods can't cross in order for BPS to say like, oh, like this community can't go back to school? Because I thought I was hearing that earlier, but I probably misheard it wrong.
Your chair, would you like me to respond?
Please.
Members, there is no cutoff like that in the MOU. The cutoff for the city is 4% citywide. So we do track it by neighborhood, and we watch it by neighborhood so that we can make sure that we're getting the information and the resources to neighborhoods to make sure it stays down. But the MOU provision is the district will pivot to fully remote if it goes over 4% citywide.
So wouldn't it be fair, so if 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 one neighborhood crosses the citywide percentage, isn't that concerning in itself?
It is.
Sending kids back from that neighborhood to to school, schools that may not even be in that same neighborhood?
It is concerning, and that is why we watch it, and we make sure that we're pouring resources into neighborhoods to keep the numbers down. But of course, of our 54,000 kids, they don't all go to school in their own neighborhood, nor do the staff that go that work in those schools necessarily live in those neighborhoods. And all of the public health guidance so far has not been by neighborhood. For example, when the governor's order came out or with the mayor's orders come out about what businesses can open and cannot open, that's not by neighborhood, that's citywide.
But isn't part of the problem for us is that the neighborhood, some of our neighborhoods are big as some small cities? And we do have all of the, you know, the the crossing back and forth. And I know, I mean, that's the angst I heard also in teachers' voices that, you know, yes, we're looking at one Boston, but as we're saying, West Roxbury's numbers are very different than Dorchester's or East Boston's numbers. And that's of great concern. Right. Yeah.
It sounds very, it sounds very scary just on. Hello? Do you guys hear me?
It's.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. No, you're muffled.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah. Now that's.
I wanted to say that I echo Mrs. Robinson's point. It just sounds very scary, like speaking on behalf of students and just having friends who go to school in East Boston and just, you know, knowing the science behind COVID, like, you know, a lot of young people say it can be asymptomatic. And like you mentioned, Ms. Post, a lot of these students, a lot of students don't go to school in their own neighborhoods. They go to, they leave their neighborhoods to go to school. And, you know, they they'd be going on public transportation, possibly bringing the virus with them. And I just think that's very, very alarming. And then my, sort of my last question was something that, something that, someone from, I forget the name, but a teacher from public comment brought up earlier. Saying that the district isn't allowing them to explore creative means and ways of.
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing. I don't know if it's.
He was, he was saying that you can't, a teacher in testimony had talked about creative scheduling. I addressed this in my comments, that we do have a process within the MOU that is written out for creative scheduling to happen within the task forces. And actually, this is a correction I need to make, and my own correction was that I said they needed to meet by November 1st. They need to have a plan to us by November 1st. So I just want to make sure I make that correction, because they're already getting ready to start meeting this week.
And we are actually encouraging creative thought to be brought to that task force so that we can explore all the different ideas people might have, so that if in fact, there's ways to do this better, we'd be happy to take that and run with it to the extent we can.
So is there anything that like, isn't allowed at all? Like, when, when, when a teacher brings up, like, because I recall them saying that the reasoning being because it's sort of, I heard them saying that the reason being because it sort of violated some health things or some like, some like, some health concerns or pedagogical concerns. So is there any like, rules or expectations as to what can't be brought forth?
It would not be, yeah, would not be able to conflict with public health guidance. So, I mean, students still need to be six feet apart. They, you know, we have DSE guidance, we have public health guidance. So they would need to make, take all that consideration at the task force meeting. And so when they come back with that plan, we would look at it and approve it if it did meet all of the requirements of the public health guidance. It could be done safely. It could be done within the other measures and not conflicting measures of the other agreements within the MOU.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. James. We're going to move on now to Dr. Rivera.
Yeah. So, you know, just listening to the public testimony, it raised, I just wanted to just confirm a couple of things that were said that don't, that are confusing now. One is, are school leaders able to decide the schedules? Or this is not, is that not in the, that's not in the MOU? The district would decide in this MOU, right? Is that correct?
School leaders can decide their schedules in terms of what teachers are teaching, what classes, and they, and school leaders also decide what students are taking this math class as opposed to the one that's three hours later. But school leaders cannot decide without going through our existing leave and or accommodation policies to change the work site of their employees. That is something people are very interested in. That is exactly why we set up the recommendation process to come through the task force, so we can look at that. What we can't do, though, is have 125 different schools deciding, for example, these three teachers who look like me, you can do this particular thing, but you two teachers who don't look like me, you cannot. That would walk the district into claims of discrimination or inequity, and we want to make sure that we, that doesn't happen. And that's why we all talked about that at the negotiating table. And in this agreement is the provision that, please bring all those thoughts, let's talk about them, let's put them on the table very honestly, and then have a recommendation made from these teachers and school leaders who've made up these task forces. And then we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay. And then, so this question of accommodations kept coming up, too. And again, it's confusing because I thought that the the teachers union, they agreed to this. So are there, are there individual teachers that are not being accommodated for their health and their safety? I mean, that's in this MOU that they will get those accommodations?
Just exactly how they always have gotten those accommodations. For example, if I have a condition related to pregnancy, and as a result of it, I need a particular accommodation, then that qualifies, and then we work that through the process as we always have. So yes, all of those things are still being processed. And I think Al Taylor was on earlier and gave some numbers. I'm not sure if if that was the 300 number that we discussed before of leaves that are pending. Again, most of those are related to maternity and paternity leaves, but there are other things. For example, perhaps I have multiple sclerosis. And perhaps that's an immune compromising position, and I would need a reasonable accommodation for that. There are processes we've had in place for decades here in the city that those kinds of requests go through, and they're being processed exactly the same way.
Okay. And, you know, just concerned again about the type of, that we keep talking about, like, the choices that families have to make. But, you know, in some cases, families have very limited choices, and it's not real, it's like a false choice. And so, you know, I continue to pay attention to the the differences among racial and ethnic groups in terms of the remote learning preference versus the in-school and or the hybrid. And I'm just still concerned about how there's still going to be, you know, racial inequities get more entrenched in in these different options. And I hope that we, you know, can be really vigilant in the data and disaggregation about all of the kinds of, you know, remote versus the the hybrid. We just have to really keep track of this. Just, you know, again, I serve on the mayor's task force on COVID and health inequities with Vice Chair, and also think that we should be gathering this data as well, you know, in different ways and not just a citywide average. So it sounds like that's all in this policy, and just wanted to raise those questions of clarification, given what we heard in the public testimony.
I really appreciate that. And we actually have a slide deck that is up on our website that actually breaks all this data down by race, by neighborhood, by school, by special education status, by EL status. So there isn't anything in the numbers that is not transparent. And there's a lot of perceptions about the numbers that aren't really based on having reviewed them. And so that's why now that information is really widely available on our website. We'd be happy to present that to the school committee at some point in time.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, I have a question. What we heard today, you know, as parents are making different decisions about students who will come back, you know, A or B or C or stay at home, how will you analyze the impact of parent choices on individual schools? If you've got, you know, one school that, you know, significant numbers of families decide they will remain, you know, fully remote, and fewer kids are coming back to school in some areas versus a lot in others, will there be any accommodations made or extra support given to schools where disproportionately higher numbers of families choose to come back versus schools that may have fewer numbers? And how that may impact, you know, the ability just to manage in a bill, in a building that may be more crowded and a smaller building than some, you know, as somebody was saying, larger buildings, fewer people decide to go back depending on the different audiences that those schools serve? How will we help to sort all of that out?
Superintendent, I'm not sure if you want to jump in on that. I can say that certainly we didn't reassign anybody to different schools. So the numbers are still staying really, and they're very close by every racial group as well, about 50/50 of who chooses to come back and who doesn't. So right now, based on the numbers, and we're still missing 20% or so, but right now, based on the numbers, we will not have any schools that will be more than about 50% full. And even those schools that will be 50% full will only have 25% for two days and 25% for another day, except in a very few small cases, like the day schools, where all of those kids may or may not choose to go from the two to the four. But again, those schools only serve those students. And so we've already been in touch with those school leaders about whether there is ways to accommodate that and specifically space to keep everybody six feet apart and all of that. So I understand the question, but in terms of resources, perhaps the superintendent can jump in better.
We also know that two high schools, Margarita Munoz and Binka High School as well, may have higher numbers of students choosing to go back, plus a higher number of EL students and SLIF students who would be in that C group that we are prioritizing, so we know that they will have more students than a typical high school might have, and they'll have them sooner. So those two school leaders are in contact with us and trying to do their schedules and and adjust. So it is really school by school. Right now, we have put the focus on family choice. We do recognize that there is difference within families and choosing, you know, there's also racial differences in families choosing. 75% of our white families want to be in person, whereas we had a lower number of our Latinx families and Black families and Asian families choosing, choosing in person at this time. I do believe that if we, once we get the teachers in and the teachers do see that the buildings are safe and they feel more comfortable, you know, it's all about all of our confidence as the adults creating the conditions for children to be successful in. And so once parents get in and they see the the facilities, once the students are there, things start to settle down, then we're going to see more people want to choose in person because they're, you know, there's nothing like real learning with a real teacher right in front of you. So we're adjusting for that now and how that will happen.
And just because the numbers just came up again, I'd like, and I have pulled it up as of right now, right now, of our Latinx families, 45.06% of them are choosing to come in person. Of our Black families, 46.34% are choosing to come in person. And of our multi-race families, 54% are choosing to come in person. So it's true that the white families are choosing at a higher rate, 72%, but it is not true that 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 number is skewing when you look at the ratio, the choices by race of the other families.
Thank you, Ms. Post. Thank you, Superintendent. Further questions, Ms. Robinson?
That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go now to Vice Chair Oliver Davila.
Thank you. I think, you know, what everyone is saying is all true. This is a really, this is really a tough choice, and I understand the anxiety that people fear, feel, and the fear, because I feel it myself, trying to make this decision for my child. I think it's very personal. Thank you, Ms. Post, for pointing that out, because I think I, I, you know, as a person who works in, works, you know, with the Latino community and is on the Health and Equities Task Force with Dr. Rivera, we're very concerned about the rates for African-American, Black immigrant, undocumented Latino, and definitely concerned about East Boston. We've done a lot of focus, and I'm glad to see the rates go down. But it's the notion that it's, yes, white parents are choosing at higher percentages, that's true. But I also feel like I don't want the message to be that families of color are not choosing in person. That's a very personal choice. And I understand for some families, it can be really scary based on your situation, sending your child back to school. But then there is the the real life thing of actually having to go out and work and to choose, you know, between work and your children, or even working at home, and your students struggling. So I think it's it's a very personal choice. I wanted to ask two questions and make one comment. My comment is, I understand everything you're saying about the rates in the neighborhood, because again, I've been in these conversations every week with Dr. Rivera and a group of lots of other people around, looking at, you know, citywide and neighborhoods. I do want to keep an eye on East Boston. I want to be respectful because families have chosen to go back in person, the 53.9%, and 79, 79% of them have opted to not have transportation. So I think that also helps to limit like the spread, I think, that people are fearing. But I do want to say that we do have to keep an eye on East Boston because, you know, it has been the hardest hit, and that is the reality. And so I want to be sensitive to that, but still respect family choice. My two questions are, and I, and the first one is just information that that people have said to me. I haven't actually walked any schools, so I cannot say that it is true or it is not true, but I would love, if you could please clarify, so people will feel, I don't know, you know, how many times we have to say it, but it has to be true when we're saying it, that schools are clean and ready, because that is like a big deal to people that I keep hearing about. And my other question is, you just mentioned two schools that have enrollment that's higher than the numbers you're talking about, like Binka. So I want to understand what is the plan in terms of the physical capacity for those schools. Thank you.
I think, Sam, are you still on the call? Otherwise, I can talk about facilities, but I think Sam Depina is still here.
Yep, Sam's still here. He's on mute, but he's still.
Sorry, guys, I was on mute. I apologize. There we go.
Sorry, and I just want to clarify my comment. Clean and safe, so not just clean.
I think, I think that there's a few My Way cafes that might be still getting finished, Sam, but you speak to those, but other than that.
Yeah, the, all the buildings are clean and safe. There are a few that are just winding down construction specifically. I was at the Warren Prescott, who's that, that's having electrical upgrade. But that building's being cleaned, and and work is going to stop and move to nights and weekends, starting Thursday. The Rowley School, we're wrapping up the construction with the K6 over there, they just put fish. The Rowley School, we're wrapping up the construction with the K six over there, they just put, finished putting the floors in. For the most part, all the rest of the schools are clean, they're, um, ready to go. Um, we've been taking pictures as we go along, all along. As some teachers are already starting to slowly come back to buildings and work with their staff to start setting up. And, um, there's a lot of folks doing that already. So we're confident that we're ready to go and clean and all the cleaning supplies are in the buildings. Sanitations, um, are, are, are delivered to schools, they're already in classrooms, um, they're already set up. You have the hand sanitizer stations up along the corridors and hallways. Um, so we're confident we're ready to go on our end.
Sam, can you just briefly speak to fans? Because I think there was a couple of comments about fans and the first thing is, they're not required, but we are going above and beyond. And I think we have ordered six thousand fans and I think you said they're also in different sizes. So if, and it's about the air movement, right? Not, not that the fan actually would fit, but that even if the fan doesn't fit, that it can, it moves the air.
Exactly, exactly. So we've ordered some, six thousand fans total, there's a lot, six thousand extension cords so that way the, um, fans can be plugged in and, and plugged into areas that are not usually typically on the outside walls, railroads are. Um, those are due to arrive sometime tonight and in, in tomorrow morning, they'll be at Campbell, we have three eighteen-wheeler, uh, truckloads full of fans that are coming. We do have different sizes, we have the box fans and we have some seven-inch fans as well that are smaller. Um, because those are the two that we determine best that would fit within the sixty, um, types of walls, fit in and around or accommodate the sixty different type of windows that we have district-wide. So the idea is to have the fans either in the windows as much as possible or aiming towards the window as long as it's blown out. Um, that's sufficient enough. And again, it is above and beyond what's required.
And, and there's also this kind of myth out there that there's only one window, uh, that works in a room?
Yeah, we average about three to four windows per room currently and many of those are already working. Uh, so again, out of the twenty-seven thousand five hundred windows that we have in the district, you've identified seven thousand that we want to repair for phase two. But we've already, um, uh, made sure that there's at least one in all, in, in all classrooms. So most of the windows and most of the classrooms are already working.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. DePina, and, uh, thank you, Superintendent. Vice Chair, do you have further questions?
Um, I will hold my, I have more questions, but I will hold them for the next time because I know it's very late.
All right. Uh, any further questions, uh, from, uh, the committee, uh, or comments on the, uh, MOA that's before us with the BTU? Well, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the MOA between the Boston Public Schools, excuse me, and the Boston Teachers Union and the School Committee of the City of Boston relative to the reopening of schools for the upcoming school year, uh, in this current, uh, COVID-nineteen pandemic as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you, Ms. Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, may we please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Well, thank you, uh, Ms. Sullivan. Uh, thanks once again to, uh, Mr. Hassan and Ms. Pus for, uh, your long and hard work all summer. Um, rolling right from, uh, negotiations with the BTU over, uh, remote learning into, uh, the discussions about the return to school, uh, which is upon us and, um, we're excited for that. And, uh, we're excited that, uh, we have a, uh, agreement in place with our teachers to, uh, ensure a safe, uh, and supported uh, return to our school building. So, uh, thank you once again to everyone in the district that's pitching in on this effort. And thank you, Superintendent, for, uh, highlighting all, uh, the good work that's happening across the district in, uh, your presentation earlier this evening. So, uh, members, we're, uh, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, um, tabling tonight's, uh, scheduled presentation on equity. Uh, that's an annual presentation we receive. Uh, we're going to revisit that in a later meeting. Uh, so move on now to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan, do we have anyone for, uh, public comment on reports this evening?
No, we have no speakers.
Uh, well, thank you. Any, uh, new business from members?
Uh, ye- yes, Mr. LaCanto, I hate to do this, but, um, given the lateness of the hour, um, I am wondering whether in this time of, uh, while we're still, uh, remote, which does serves to make us more accessible in many ways, particularly a public comment. But more than ninety minutes of public comment every night, uh, makes it very difficult to focus on the other work. And I'm wondering if we could, uh, consider a temporary suspension of the rules given this, this situation to limit the amount of time we spend on a public comment with expressly looking for ways that we get more emails, other communications that have to happen. Because this is just, um, I, I anticipate this being a regular event that we're here for seven, eight hours, uh, increasingly unproductive. And it's very difficult. So I would love to be able to consider that. I know there's lots of rules and regulations, but I would like to put that on the table.
Well, I appreciate you raising that, uh, Dr. Coleman. Um, and I'm looking around and it, it seems like there might be, uh, some interest, uh, from other members in, um, considering something along those lines. So, um, perhaps the Vice Chair and I can talk about this, uh, in, uh, the interim before the next meeting and think about ways that we might be able to address that issue. And again, I.
Again, it's, it's not, not attempt to avoid public comment or interactions, just there may be a more efficient, effective way to get it.
Indeed. Um, well, thank you for that. And, um, I thank you as well, um, for a conversation we had a little bit earlier this week, uh, reminding us about scheduling the retreat, uh, that, um, we've talked about, uh, and we've gotten a bit off schedule, uh, in holding. Uh, we, uh, made an effort last year to try to make our, uh, engage in, uh, agenda-setting retreats once every three months. And we've gotten away from that, of course, uh, first with the hiring of the superintendent and then, uh, moving into, uh, uh, our current, uh, conditions. But, um, I think we certainly, it's about time to do, uh, to hold one once again. And as we mentioned in the vote, uh, in, uh, August on, uh, Superintendent's Performance Review, uh, we want to, uh, engage in a goal-setting discussion that would be better served in the retreat setting rather than a, a school committee, uh, meeting. So, um, I, uh, discussed briefly with the superintendent or the vice chair about scheduling something perhaps in October, uh, once we get past, uh, the initial opening of, uh, schools for in-person learning. And so we will talk and, and try to get that on the calendar as well. Uh, one other, uh, two other items I want to mention for folks. Um, one is, um, another, uh, helpful reminder from, uh, fellow committee members uh, to do our annual review of executive session, uh, minutes and, um, determine whether there are any executive session minutes that, uh, we, um, have collected in the last couple of years that have yet to be released and might be ripe for, uh, releasing now. So, Ms. Sullivan, if you could work with Ms. Lazard to review anything out in the, um, uh, in the queue that we can, uh, take a vote on and release at the next meeting, uh, or at a future meeting, that would be appreciated. And finally, uh, I wanted to make a brief announcement on, um, relevant to Superintendent's contract. This is, uh, an inconsistency that was discovered administratively, uh, in recent day, uh, recent weeks, excuse me. And, uh, the language has to do with, uh, the number of allowed vacation days. Superintendent's contracts, uh, the language states that she is entitled to twenty-five days of vacation, uh, accrued at two-point-five days per month. Uh, however, uh, if you do the calculation, two-point-five days per month is actually thirty days, um, of vacation per year. So the intent of this provision, if you read on in the contract, is to provide the superintendent with the same number of vacation days as the other BPS senior administrative, uh, staff members receive. And Superintendent's executive cabinet members receive thirty days of vacation per year. As such, we believe it is a, um, the correct interpretation of that, uh, provision to, uh, provide the superintendent with the same benefit, um, uh, vis-à-vis thirty days of vacation, which would be accrued at two-point-five days per month. So BPS is going to, uh, prepare an addendum to that contract, which I'll sign as chair, uh, to correct this inconsistency. And, uh, before we move on, I, I wanted to, uh, ask if there were any further questions or concerns about that course of action. Well, looking around, I hear none, so, um, I'll, uh, take that as, uh, uh, assent. So, uh, if there's no further new business, uh, amongst the members, uh, that'll conclude our business for this evening. Uh, at twelve oh four AM. The next school committee meeting, uh, will take place on Wednesday, September thirtieth at five PM here on Zoom. Uh, if there's nothing further, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Robinson, any discussion or objections to motion? Ms. Sullivan, if you'll, uh, call the roll and take us on out of here.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, everyone take care and be well.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes, everyone have a good night.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to all of you for, uh, putting in another, uh, yeoman's day of work. Um, I hope you all have a nice couple of weeks and we'll see you back here on September third. Good night.
Good night.